Mr. George Leggins in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time we'll observe a moment of silence. Madam Secretary, call the roll please.
Hasheb, Guston, Zadra, Seraza, absent, Dorch, Azzie, Kajal.
Here. Approval of the agenda?
Second.
Of motion, second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. The public comment. Donna Clontz.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. I'm wearing a very strange hat this morning, however, it's a very serious message. I and several other members of the general public have been watching with kind of dismay and disappointment that so much is needed for our state and for our cities and for our counties. And so far, there's been very little progress to decide how we're going to pay for our education systems, our essential services, the critical services that we need at the city and the county levels as well as the state. And we know that the legislature is getting toward the end of the session and that process is beginning in very serious discussions all over the legislature today. Several of us have decided to create a letter that will go to every member of the legislature and to the governor's office that basically says in a bipartisan way, "It's time to find the revenues that we all need to pay for education and to pay for the critical services that we need in our state." And we're collecting signatures. I have one of my petitions here. We collected 264 signatures from citizens in northern Nevada and we took those signatures times three yesterday to the legislature and delivered them to the governor, to the assembly members and to the senators that each one of these people have as their representative. And we're going to continue to do that as we can collect as many signatures as possible. We're attempting to reach folks that normally aren't involved in the political process, some of whom don't even know who their assembly person is or who their state senator is. But we look them up and we get this message to each one of those elected folks, telling them how serious this time is to all of us and that the "No new taxes" message is not going to work because there are quite a few ways that we can come up with, new ways for Nevada to raise the money that it's going to take to save our schools, save our cities and our counties and the services that all of our citizens need to live a decent life and to keep the quality of life that we all enjoy here, especially in Reno and in Washoe County. Thank you for the time. I look forward to folks contacting us to get these things signed.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Any other public comments at this time? Did you have one? You want to speak, sir?
Yes, sir.
Come on up. Identify yourself for the record.
My name is Matt Benedict. I'm the head coach of Reno Aquatic Club. This will be very short and brief. I'm here today after you guys opened up the doors, after your closed meeting, just to kind of see what the thought process is and the direction of any parks and recreation closures or cut of facility use for the pools. Just a reminder, we are very underserved in this community and there's a lot of athletes and taxpayers that use the pools around the Reno area. That's all I had. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, before we get into the budget and stuff, we're going to take a short, we're going to take a break for a few minutes to go over some legal meetings and legal matters and things like that at this time. Is that all right, Legal Counsel? We'll take a recess. We're going to be about 30 minutes before we really get started. Thank you. Council members, so that we can go through this, if you have a lot of questions and things as we go, some of them, but if you're going to get in in-depth, make a list of your questions and the city manager will get back to us with the answers and we'll give everybody copies of whatever those questions were and so we don't drag this thing out unmercifully with long-term questions and everything. So, Mr. City Manager, would you take over?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kevin Knutson, interim city manager, for the record. I want to thank the council and the mayor for this opportunity for staff to present information about the 2011-2012 budget. Today's meeting is less about the numbers and more about the organization. Back in March, we presented an amended 2010-2011 budget with a number of changes to it. This budget that we have provided to the council on Friday does not change any of the service levels or any of the activities that we are currently doing. So, there are no changes proposed in today's budget presentation. I specifically say "today" because on Monday, we're going to come back with another budget presentation that shows what would happen if we were unable to meet our goals with the bargaining units to get seven and a half percent in salary reductions, what those cuts would look like to the departments if we had to take that money out of service and supplies and positions. We'll also cover all the capital improvement program on Monday, but it is on today's agenda in case that there's any questions that you want to put forward to staff. But we will go over the list of projects on Monday. I'm going to take items B1, B2, B3, and B4 simultaneously so that if there's any questions through this process on any of those items, that we can respond to them and also try to get through all of these issues in a timely manner. I spoke with staff earlier. Each department director will get up and give a brief presentation of a couple minutes. They have between two and four slides apiece. And what they're going to be talking to you about is what their department looks like today and how they're delivering services in this new reality that we find ourselves. The organization has changed significantly over the past three years and I want them to let their constituents know, let you know, and the rest of the city employees know how we have reacted to that, what changes they've made, and how we're delivering services in this environment. Like I said, the budget itself won't change very much. The total proposed budget for the general fund is about $170 million. That is down significantly from 2009-10 where we had $187 million budget, but it's very close to what we're going to end this year with. The packages that went on on Friday contain some errors in them. I was notified by OMB staff that the software did not take some of the changes to performance measures. We will get those out to you as soon as possible and I apologize for any inconvenience that may have caused. In talking with people who are sitting in the negotiations with the unions, I believe there is a lot of reason for optimism and I hope that today's budget is the one that we end up going forward with for the future. But that final decision will be made at the public hearing on May 17th. That's an afternoon meeting and that's the public hearing and we will go over all of the numbers of the budget proposal at that time. And it will either reflect today's budget or next Monday's budget, depending on where we're at with negotiations. Also on that agenda is a resolution asking for the council to find that it is necessary for a reduction in force. That item is on there in case we need to do that for next year. My hope is that we won't, but we must ask for it so that we have the ability to do that if it comes up. Already, the management team has voted amongst themselves, or agreed, they didn't vote, to take a seven and a half percent cut and we're asking unrepresented employees to do the same thing. So, those are already counted into this budget and we've assumed it for all the bargaining units at this time. At the end of the presentation, we'll also go over the other funds that we have and I'll give you some background on what's going on with the redevelopment agency as well. With that, if you'll go to the first slide, please. Just briefly, the city is far different today than it was 20 years ago. The population's up 60 percent. We have almost doubled the physical area. And you can see from the statistics here that in every way, we have more physical attributes than we did before. But that second line where it says FTEs, that's the number of employees that we currently have, 1,124. And it's less than we had in 1990. And as each department director's come up, they'll share with you some of the service levels that they're dealing with today with that same staffing level. We have more parks, more streets, more sewer lines, more things that require our attention. And so, it requires for us to be smarter about how we apply our resources and use different practices, find different ways. And at the end of the presentation, I'm going to share with you what our vision is moving forward and how we're going to be able to accomplish that, given the constraints that we have to live within. We're going to hear from our four largest departments first, Parks and Rec, Police, Fire, and Public Works, because those are the ones that have the services that most impact our residents and are the highest level of service that we provide outside of the organization. And then we'll follow up with internal service departments and other departments after that. With that, I'd like to ask Ms. Conway, our PRCS director, to come forward and give her a presentation. Hold on just one second, Julie. Mr. Vice Mayor, do we need to pause for public comment?
Just a hand. We do have some requests to speak and they're looking... Two of the three... Two of the three involved, or all three involved, Parks and Recreation. So, why don't we get the public comment first? David Doricio.
Good morning. Good morning, Mayor. He's not here. Council members, Julie and Jonathan, from the city of Parks and Recreation. My name is David Doricio. I'm a city resident of Reno, a small business owner, and also, I'm a member of the Rosewood Lakes Men's Club Board of Directors. I wrote some things down here. First of all, we would like to thank you all for the opportunity for us to be able to speak with you today. And thank you all for the continued support in keeping affordable golf for the residents in Reno, Sparks area, especially for our young and upcoming golfers, along with the senior citizens that are living on limited budgets, that like to get out for the game of golf and good exercise. We believe that it is really important to keep affordable golf here in Reno for those people and also for all those who visit the greater Reno Sparks area. That is why I and all of the other Board of Directors members have been giving some of our time, money, and efforts with working with the Park and Recreation Department to achieve this goal for Rosewood Lakes and the city of Reno. We would like to continue working with the course and the Parks and Recreation Department as the effort to try to keep the labor and maintenance costs down so that we do not lose Rosewood Lakes. Also, with the RTC connector, the Board of Directors, and we've been discussing, we believe it would be a great opportunity for the city of Reno to get a new and updated golf course and practice facility with this project. It would be new and exciting for all golfers in the surrounding areas. We also believe the city of Reno really needs to have an affordable 18-hole golf course and a good practice facility for all of its residents. An 18-hole golf course and a better driving facility will without a doubt create more revenue for the city than a nine-hole golf course in the long run as the economy improves. Couple examples for you. Most people, when they're having a golf tournament, want an 18-hole golf tournament. I currently put on two golf courses, one to charity event at Rosewood each year. And the cost of affordability for me to have it there creates more revenue for my charity events that I put at Rosewood compared to going to other golf courses in this area. So, it also really helps the community fundraisers and charity events. It also gives the course flexibility, having an 18-hole golf course compared to a nine-hole golf course, when they have a problem on the golf course as per like tending to aerification or sprinkler problems that they might have. If you had a nine-hole golf course, that would shut the whole golf course down, therefore creating only, be able to shut it down so you don't create any revenue for that day or days to come. If you had an 18-hole golf course and you had a problem at the golf course, at least the operation would not shut down fully. You'd have nine holes to continue to get revenue for that day. So, that's what we think.
I'm sorry, sir. Your time has expired. You may not have heard that, but is there any other quick comment you want to make?
No.
Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Nettie Oliverio.
Then, thank you, council and vice mayor. I'm Nettie Oliverio. I'm chair of the Arts and Culture Commission for the city of Reno. And I wanted to come and give you a little bit of an update on what's going on with the Arts and Culture Commission. Our council liaison, Councilman Azzie, had encouraged us to think out of the box and to create an event. And so, we're creating an event that has people jumping out of boxes after they've painted a mural or played an instrument inside that box. No, I'm kidding. But we are working on an event for the city of Reno coming up in the next 12 months that incorporates arts, of course, and as well enjoin some of our for-profit organizations and businesses within the city to pal with us on a really nice collaborative. Along with that, that we're working toward, our committees that are part of the commission have been working hard as well. Our marketing committee, over the past fiscal year, has done a couple of boot camps aimed at teaching our organizations in arts and culture new ways to market, recognizing the fact that they have sometimes extraordinarily limited budgets by which to promote themselves once they've mounted their program. And we've had great collaboration with many of the marketing professionals in our area on this. Our public art committee continues to have at least one project in the air all the time and some more. And again, leveraging the capacity to use funding from other organizations and other entities. So, we're very glad to have them working, all of these in collaboration of staff, of course, and very important to us to keep on going. Over the past two years, more than two years, we have been working on the update of the cultural master plan for the city of Reno. And we're about to put the ribbons on that and present it to you in the next couple of months. We had intentionally not wanted to give it to you while you were working on all of the budget entities because we'd like for you to be able to read it. Now, you have no time to do that. So, we're very proud of what we've been doing. And this is a huge collaboration with a number of entities within our city, as well as state and region, and having people work together to look forward to the next decade of arts and culture programming within the city of Reno. And what we will be building is massive and we are very proud of what we're about to bring to you. Finally, in the last go-round on our grants, applications, and proving grants for our arts organizations, there were a couple that received less funding than we would like for them to have received. And so, we have worked really hard with staff to be able to find some additional funding within our budget, not looking outside, but within what we have, to be able to augment that funding. Specifically, the programs that need a little bit more funding are those that hugely address children. And so, we are working toward that and we thank you very much for your help.
Thank you. Philip Heran. Philip Heran. Okay, Mr. Acting City Manager, we have taken care of the public comments. So, Ms. Conway, would you come forward, please? Yep. Would you fill out another card? I know you filled one out earlier.
I did fill one out and the clerk is telling me that it's in the mayor's stack. So, with your permission, I'll be quick with public comment. Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor and Council. My name is Donna Clontz. I live in Reno. I'm very involved as a volunteer with the city of Reno. I serve on the Neighborhood Advisory Board for the Northwest. I'm on the Senior Citizens Advisory Board for the city of Reno and I also am a volunteer at Rosewood Lakes. And I'm wearing my Rosewood Lakes shirt today because today's my day to be a volunteer marshal on the golf course. The city of Reno has a wonderful facility out there now. When the decision was made that a freeway was going to go through there, I was a very unhappy camper. But I understand that with RTC's help and with the planning that if we continue to keep the golf course as one of the funded programs with the city of Reno at a level that allows it to run so that citizens continue to be able to golf there, that we may have the opportunity to have another nine holes added when the road goes through the valley there. And that would be a brand-new facility for folks to come and use. The most important part, I think, of that golf course, aside from the fact that it's one of the most beautiful places you could play golf because it's in the middle of a wildlife area and birds and natural beauty are there, is that it's so affordable. Most of the golf courses are beyond many people's pocketbooks these days and keeping the city's course in a working condition is really important to a lot of us here. It keeps us active. It keeps a lot of the seniors especially active. So, I'll move to the second part of my statement. As a member of the senior services, senior citizens advisory board for the city, there are many outreach programs that are put together on basically a shoestring with a very small staff. But a lot of volunteers and a lot of seniors get their exercise, get a chance to get out of their homes, get a chance to socialize. And for some of them, it's the only chance they get a decent meal because they're at some of our facilities where all of the programs are cooperating and working together to provide these services for seniors. So, as you look at the budget, I know that in all past times as we've gone through these things, that seniors have been very high on your priority list. And I know that all of you hold them high in the needs that this city provides. But I know we're in tough times. So, I'm asking on behalf of all of us to continue that high priority for our senior services and for outreach services. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Conway, would you come forward? Just a quick comment for the two public speakers that addressed Rosewood. I think the council has been pretty unanimous in the fact that they're looking at an 18-hole golf course, regardless of what happens. So, I think they're pretty supportive of those two positions that were mentioned. Ms. Conway.
Thank you. Good morning, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, and interim city manager, Kevin Knutson. I am, for the record, Julie Conway, Parks Recreation and Community Services Director, and I'm very pleased today to represent our professional staff, the citizen boards and commission members, and citizen advocates in discussing and talking about the fiscal year 11-12 budget and specifically, as the interim city manager discussed, the ideas and the department restructuring efforts. In deference to your time and what we have prepared, and I have prepared, are three slides to illustrate some of the ways that the department has and continues to prepare for the changes that we continue to experience due to the downturn in the economy and the dynamics of the changes in the market. And it's not just and only because of the budget, but also the changes in demographics, the changes in the selections of services, but certainly because of the changes in the revenue that we have and the changes that we've had to make because of that. In addition, I'd like to highlight that you have received this week an extensive amount of information through a council memo with information about staffing levels. And I hold up this information in front of me that you have asked for related to our service levels. And this is information received in the council memo. This information was presented to you as a result of request of information from a prior city council meeting. This provides our staffing levels. It also provided information related to our services and also part-time staff levels and supervision. It provides information on volunteer levels as well. And we also had cost recovery information in there. You requested that information and so, I may be referring to that. And/or, if you have questions about that, feel free to write those down and we can come back with answers related to that. As I go through these three slides quickly, one thing that I did not do, and again, this is in deference to your time, I did not repeat information that I presented to you before related to other items that we have done in the past and that is related to extensive use of volunteers. We continue to do that. We've added additional volunteer programs. We've extended and highlighted our Adopt a Park program. We use student interns. We cross-train our employees where appropriate. We apply and receive grants for operations. We continue to do that. And capital programs. As you know, we've reduced our operations of the golf course to nine months. That's another restructuring. So, I didn't include all of those up there, so this is not an exhaustive list, but it does highlight some of the main areas in which we are continuing to be ever diligent to restructure our department to be efficient. So, we've combined our Arts and Culture Division with our Admin Resources Division to reduce from five to four divisions, thus freezing a manager division. I have reassigned our Park Planning, Special Events, and Park Shelter function to Parks Division, thus combining those two functions together. And that brings those two functions more closely tied to the, not only the functions administratively, but also in the field. And that helps to make those functions efficient. For 11-12, we've reduced the supervisor positions by 18 percent and that's four positions for next year. And also reassigned the Recreation Building rental management to the Recreation Division and they will be handling more of the actual rental of the Recreation Buildings and that will also improve efficiency. In addition, we have been asked to take on and help support citywide efficiencies. And so, we have done that and we are taking on the oversight of the Reno Access Advisory Committee to support the Human Resources Department. So, previously, that was taken on by the HR department and we will be assuming that responsibility and the staffing of that. And also, as you know, you acted on this at the March 23rd meeting. We will also take on the responsibility for the management of the West Street Market. And I'm happy to say that I personally met with the owners out there. We've had a couple of meetings out there to brainstorm ideas about what might happen. And we're looking at bringing forward a fee structure to you so that we can move forward on actually starting that process of moving forward on using the spaces and getting out and moving forward on getting that space rented. So, we're looking forward to that. We've got some ideas, not only from the public, but staff has got some great ideas as well. So, we're not only working internally within our department, but we're externally helping other departments to help them restructure and assist outside of our department in helping them. My third slide I wanted to show in just a quick snapshot of over the last, from '08-'09 to 11-12 proposed at this time and showing, as I showed, the percentage. We've reduced our supervisory level. We will reduce that 18 percent, our supervisory level, 18 percent. level. We will reduce that 18%, our supervisory level, 18% by reducing by four supervisors in, as you see, from 20 to 17, and keeping our support only reducing by one. So that is the overview at this time. And I did want to highlight, as the interim city manager highlighted, that we're keeping our services as you have asked us to keep them, pretty much at the same level this next year. And we're trying to maintain them and working with our citizen and advocate groups. And we'll have more information about that at a future meeting. So I'm going to stop there. If you have any questions for me, I can take those now, or you can provide those in written form, and I'll respond to those at a future meeting.
Any questions, or do you want to? Sure, we can, but I just, if it's going to be a lot of questions, I want to get them in writing so we can get back to them. And then we'll get them back and get the answers on Monday. But if you've got one or two questions now you want to ask, let's go ahead and ask.
Julie, on the couple of questions, the reduction in supervisor position, was that already done in our, our last round, or is that new proposed RIFs? What is that?
It's a combination of retirees, resignations, a combination of both.
And has that been done already, or is that proposed to be done for the, for the upcoming fiscal year?
Both, both. There's, there's a combination of, one of them has resigned, and there are two that are going to retire.
Okay, so where's the, I'm sorry, okay, so it's three.
In 1112. So you're, you're going to see in 1112, you're going to see a reduction of, a reduction of supervisors for 1112.
Okay, so two are going to be retiring out in the 1112 cycle.
Right. And we have a resignation that occurred in 1011, and it will be frozen, and we will, we will have those savings into 1112.
And then just a question on the CDGB funds, because they were cut. Is that having any impact on the parks budget? Because I know we do have some CDBG.
Right.
Funds available that go to our different programs for seniors, youth.
Yes, I believe you might be referring, the, the primary one that we have right now is the Dick Taylor Park Project that we're using for the universally acceptable playground. And that, as I understand it, those funds are still available for us, and those have not been cut. I'm going to look to Jody or Maureen to verify that.
For the record, Maureen McKissick, to respond to your question, no, there is no impact on the cuts which, which occurred on April 14 onto the Dick Taylor budget.
But any programs within Parks and Rec? I know we had the meal programs, the senior programs, I mean, and I know the mayor, mayor had written a letter, congressional letter on that. So would that impact Parks and Rec at all?
No, it wouldn't.
Okay. And then last question for now, Julie, and I can email. Just out at the West Street Market, there was, I know that the, the owners over there, and we've got to get that thing hopping, wanted to do, we had done a farmer's market in the past that was extremely successful. My understanding is to do that for the, the six-week period would be about a $12,000 cost to do the, the blocking the road. Since you guys are taking over that, is, is that the case? Because I'd like to know for, for this budget cycle.
Let, let me get back to you on that, Councilor Farazah. I know they want to do that again, and I'll need to, to talk with Gayla about how that was, how, how that was put into the budget. Because I.
No, I don't think it's in the budget. I mean, I was over there yesterday talking to people, and I think we're getting great interest over there, and maybe.
Yes.
We can talk about that during redevelopment.
Right.
Since we reduced the, the lease payments, but, and even arts and culture, having different artists out there.
Exactly.
Like a festival-type setting.
That's what we talked about.
With bands. But I, I think this year is primed to do that if we're going to create synergy. So I just want to know what, what the costs are associated. It seemed a little high to, to block off the street. So if I could get that.
Okay. And I heard that from the vendors, or from the, the leases too, that they wanted to bring that back. So we can get that back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Heskey, and then Mr. Hasheff.
On your staffing level history, this, this pro, here, the professional has gone down 25%, but the support staff has gone down 56%. I think that's one of the questions that has come up before. So maybe a little, and it might be on that piece of paper that I saw on my desk yesterday, and I haven't read it yet, that long paper. So if it's there, that's great, I'll read it. But we went from having basically one supervisor overseeing an average of four people, and now it's one supervisor overseeing two people. I don't, so I need some justification as to why we have to have one supervisor for two people. If I'm doing my math right, and I might be wrong, but 17 over 33 is about one to two.
And are you, okay.
And you'll have to answer that now. That's for, to come back to us.
Okay.
Mr. Heskey, or do you think, Mr. Heskey?
Yeah, the, in the, in the programmatic budget, we're decreasing seniors by almost 20%. What I'd like to know is, you know, what programs, that's about $100,000, you know, what programs are going to be cut back? Let me know what, what's going to be impacted by decreasing the budget by 20%. And then you, in the slide presentation, you're correct, you're taking over the Reno Access Advisory Committee, but I didn't see that in your budget. I know that's kind of a recent development. Do you know what cuts are going to be made in that budget, or what's proposed now that it's under your watch?
You mean what cuts are going to be, have to be made to take that on?
Yeah, so for example, under seniors, which is under your budget, I can see a 20% reduction. Now that you're assuming responsibility for the Reno Access Advisory Committee, I'm assuming you're going to be taking over that budget as well?
And that is under the recreation budget, because it is taken over by, it would be managed under April Wolf.
Correct.
So she would be taking that responsibility on. And as far as the responsibility and the, any capital project or money that would be coming in would come into, into, into that budget.
So are you proposing any additional reductions in, in that particular budget?
The reduction in that budget, let me pull that up.
And the same question I had for seniors.
Let me, let me get back to you on that.
I need to know what's going to be cut.
Yeah. Let me, I'll get back to you on that.
So have, have these answers for us.
Yes, I don't want to take the time now.
Get them to us ahead of time, but be sure we're ready for them on Monday. Any other questions? Yes, Maureen.
Councilman Hasheff, because it's the same with youth, Julie, that's why I was asking. You have a reduction, even services and supplies, there's 134% reduction. I guess what I'd like to know is, and again, I'm assuming from Kevin's presentation, this is assuming the, the seven and a half percent reduction at this point in time. So what, what things are getting cut out of here? Even aquatics, you have 33%, arts and culture, 44. I, I just want to know what that is.
Sure.
That, that park maintenance, 33%, what those programs are.
Sure.
I, I mean, was that partially done in last cycle? Would be, be the question, Julie.
We can have that for you.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Dorch.
And I don't know if this is Julie for you or for Kevin. I mean, I thought, I thought when we were looking at this year's budget, if we got the concessions from the employees, that we were going to be flat. We were going to maintain the services as-is. Yet I'm looking at Parks and Rec, and we've got a 26% reduction year over year. Because this is, this, what we're looking at today is assuming we get the concessions, correct?
Yes, yes, sir, it is. And I believe that the new budget for 1011 is what we're carrying forward into next year. And I'm going to defer to my staff. Are the comparisons to the original budget for 1011?
Yes, they're to be adopted.
So what you're looking at is not new cuts, but the cuts that we've already made in March.
So is that what we're going to be looking at throughout the day today?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So, you know, and some of this also includes the new information that Julie's provided on the retirements and the person who left as well. So there might be some slight changes for that. But when you're looking at the comparison to last year, you're looking at the beginning of the year budget to what we're proposing for next year, which is very similar to what we're going to end this year at. So it's not new cuts.
Yeah, that was my assumption, is that if we got the concessions, we were maintaining the services that we currently have in place for next year.
That's correct.
And that's, but that's not really what I heard from Julie, correct?
Your, what we ended with last, the last session, I mean, we, for example, you wanted to keep Sabine open. So Sabine will be open next year. So those, those, those direction, that is still moving forward that way. There are some minor.
But I mean, here, I mean, but for example, I mean, let's just start at the top. We've got a 33% reduction in aquatics. That's already in place. That's not a change from 1011 to 1112, or is it?
That's, that was already in place. That's what we had to make.
That is not an additional change. That is a change that we've already made this year. It's just not reflected because you've got the adopted budget there.
Okay.
Okay.
Those are changes that we had to make that were already in place. And so I can come back and tell you.
So Monday, what we'll hear from you is, if we don't get concessions, here's what we're going to have to change.
And I, and I can tell you.
Today, we're assuming that there really are no changes from where we're at today to, to where we're going to be 1112.
There were, there were a few changes at the end. What I did is to take your direction at that meeting to make sure that those specific services that you wanted were in the 1011 budget, and they would carry forward to 11.
And we're carrying those over to 1112.
Exactly. And so, and then I had to go back and find the remainder of the, the 20%. And that, and that's what I did. So I want to come back and tell you where I found that. So, so you know what those changes were. And, and then, and then if they're, the concessions are not found, I will come back and tell you what those are as well. So you know what any changes are.
So we're not, we really are not looking at a 26% reduction from where we're at today to 1112, based upon what we're being presented with today?
That's correct, sir. The changes that you're seeing in there are from the adopted budget last year. What we're going to end the year with is a lot less than that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other question? Yes, Mr. Haskey.
I just want to follow up with Kevin. On the sheet you handed out before about the proposed remedies for next year's budget, you have a, a line in here that says other expenditure reductions of $3 million. Is that something that will change then? I don't know what that is. You didn't.
Those, those were reductions that we made in both November and March of this year. So our year-end budget will be a lot less.
So it's an ongoing.
And those are carried forward into next year. If we need to make additional reductions, it'll be on top of that.
So that's, that's just a carry force. Again, it's not additional cuts that we're looking at.
That's correct, sir.
Okay. No other questions? We'll move on to the next.
I do.
Whoop, whoop, excuse me, I'm sorry.
Julie, so we've cleared, clarified that this change that we were all looking at really is from the adopted budget. So Monday will be the telling story if we get the concessions in the, the salary expense. So if not, can you give us kind of an overview of the types of cuts that you're going to be looking at, that you would share with us on Monday? Because they may be entirely different than what we would be willing to, you know, that would satisfy us. And it would be better for us to give you another week to work on it, as opposed to slam you with a bunch of hesitation on Monday and expect you to be prepared for our budget meeting on the 17th.
Well, the, the types of cuts we're looking at, because it's, because it is a 10% reduction, we're looking, we were asked to bring forward a 6% plus another 4% reduction. So it's, it's a significant reduction to our budget.
Understand, but you've heard us express in the past.
Right. We're looking at reductions in our, we kept, we kept the pools as whole as possible. We're looking at potentially reductions in our senior services. It's either that or Sierra Kids.
Senior services is untouchable, as far as I'm concerned.
Right. So I, I'm just, it's either that or, you know, Sierra Kids. We're looking at reductions in the, a, the cultural affairs and administrative services ma, Department or Ma, Division. We're looking at significant reductions in park maintenance.
Let's, let's let her, let's let her come back with the answers. If you've got some questions.
I've already.
She knows where you're coming from, so let's get those answers, then. And, and, you know, I, I don't want to give another week. I think we got Saturday and Sunday, so that's five days between now and, you'll be prepared, and everybody will. Yes, ma'am. Do you have anything else right now?
And if I may, just ask that you review the cost recovery information as well that was sent out. That is something that, that we looked at, and, and I know what you're interested in. I know very well what you're interested in. It's, it's looking at the cost recovery and the services that we provide, and a variety of criteria. So anyway, I'll leave it at that.
I guess, Mr. Mayor, I guess what the challenge is, I tend to agree with Councilwoman Zadra, because I think we need a dual track. Okay, we're going through, assuming that we're going to, or being hopeful that we're going to get the, the seven and a half percent. But if we don't, there's going to be some, some major cuts here. And I think that those cuts have to be, I mean, we're on a short time period to adopt the budget and give to the state. If there's modifications to what staff's proposing, there's going to take time to do that because there's going to be cuts in other places. So I think to go through the budget this way, I think is great, but at the same time, we don't know what the ramifications are going to be of, of, if the seven and a half percent isn't met. We, we're going to have to be giving direction. Is Monday going to be enough time?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe that we also have the opportunity to put it on any of the agendas for any of the regular or special meetings. Plus, we can call additional meetings if you feel it's necessary. In addition, we don't have to adopt on May 17. We have to provide the final document on June 1. So we basically have till May 25 to make that decision. So if on Monday, after you've heard the entire presentation, you have a lot of questions or changes you want, I believe we'll have multiple opportunities to come back to you with suggestions. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions right now? Chief?
Good morning, Honorable Mayor and Council. Steve Pitts, on behalf of the Reno Police Department. Briefly today, what I'm going to talk about is directly deal with issues and questions around our restructuring from fiscal year 1011. And then I, of course, can take some questions if you have questions about a proposed budget for 1112. The slide in front of you basically represents a comparison of sworn and civilian positions currently that we have at the Reno Police Department. You have 288 police officers. We're holding 85 vacancies. And that's compared to fiscal year '08-'09, where we had 373 police officers. And as you can see, there's about a 23% reduction. On the civilian side, in, in '08-'09, fiscal year '08-'09, we had roughly 107 civilian employees, and we currently have 58 and a half. When you look at the numbers in the budget compared from, from '08-'09 into current day, we've, we've made reductions of close to about six point, or 9.6 million dollars. This slide represents, as the city manager used a similar comparison in his presentation, it's really kind of a workload and environmental comparison. In 1990, we had 56 square miles of jurisdiction. Right now, we have 105.8. And we had 134,000 residents. Today, we have 217,000. We roughly handled about 105,000 calls for service, and today, we're at 152,000, averaging about 416 calls a day currently. The DOJ, Bureau of Justice, FBI numbers that they've used for years, this council has heard them, of the ratio of police officers, full-time police officers per residence, has always been between. always been between 1.8 and 2.3 for progressive, probably effective policing agencies in America. On the East Coast, it's usually much higher, but on the West Coast, 1.8 to 2.3 is generally the number you see. And in 1990, we were at 2.3, and today, we're at 1.4. And of course, I had mentioned the civilian staff and the comparison to civilian staff today. When you take a look at the sworn staff, this slide, this, this draft basically reflects the sworn staff at the Reno Police Department and where we're at currently. Of course, you have a chief in place. In 1990, you had seven deputy chiefs. And when you compare it to fiscal year '08-'09, we had three. But an interesting comparison is if you look at deputy chiefs and commanders for, obviously, '08-'09 fiscal, you had seven command officers and a chief of police. Today, you have a chief of police and two command officers. You can obviously see those reductions to your, to your right. I can tell you that our focus in the last year has been specifically to reduce the command staff, push that money down into the organization, or help meet the deficits that you've asked us to meet here at council so we could keep police officers and civilian staff employed and providing a service to our community. This slide represents impacts. I'll briefly go over this and add some information to it briefly. What you see on your immediate left are the impacts that we discussed in council last year with response time to call for, to calls for service, preventative and proactive patrolling, dedicated time for community policing, the reductions that we projected we would see in support units. And you see those numbers up there. We reduced detectives by 30% and our traffic enforcement division by about 46%. And the reductions in CSOs. A column to your right reflects really kind of the adjustments we're adapting as an organization. We're trying to regrow the Reno Police Department, and this council approved a reorganization in April of last year. And so we reorganized the entire Reno Police Department with a focus on a strong, very proactive patrol division. And I'll have to tell you, I'll go over some numbers at the end of the presentation. We just recently had our annual survey, and there's some impressive numbers on, on the performance of this patrol division in the last year. The emphasis included with the reorganization is crime fighting, solving neighborhood problems, increased traffic enforcement and education, and dealing with repeat and prolific offenders and our narcotics problems in our community. We implemented a program called the Guiding Principles. I won't bore you with all that today. I can get that information to you if you're interested. And the alternative reporting method system we've used probably for the last four years to assess really what calls for service, can we, can we provide the resources to handle? Can we handle them differently? Or can we prioritize them differently? And we continually use that to our advantage. We've improved our online reporting system. I had mentioned Code Baby before, and that's the name of it. It's a virtual police officer that we'll have on our online, online reporting and obviously our website that will virtually guide people through a variety of services that we'll provide to our community and any visitors who would be checking out our website. And then, of course, we're trying to improve our volunteerism. We have a tremendous SAVE program. We've had here for years, some 130 volunteers that do a tremendous job. I call them kind of the Marine Corps, the Reno PD because they really are. One of the programs with volunteerism that we think is somewhat hopeful is working with Project Upward Bound at the University of some 200 young adults. And we're negotiating with them right now, trying to start a program. We think it'd be great to have a sizable number of young adults supporting the Reno Police Department. Just briefly, and I'll take questions. I had mentioned the annual survey. We have done annual surveys at the Reno Police Department for some 26 years. And the last survey we did, we just got the results about two weeks ago, and we messaged that information to our community. On performance image and safety downtown and in our communities, we saw an increase over the last five years. And, and for me, that's impressive. We are, we are obviously all doing more with less, but this reorganization of the Reno Police Department that you approved last year, these young cops that are out there working 24/7 clearly made a difference, and that survey was an indicator of that. The other thing we do is take quarterly surveys to measure actual customer service of people we interact with in our community or visitors. And those surveys are coming back quarterly that these young officers and the men and women that are working 24/7 out there are doing a great job. And so what you approved last year is working, and, and we appreciate your support. Take any questions.
Couple of questions on the calls for service, the 416 daily average. What are the majority of calls for? Can you get us that breakdown?
I can get that for you, ma'am. I don't have that today. As far as emergencies in progress, priority one-twos and threes, I can tell you what our, what our response times are today, but I, I'll have to get that for you as far as the breakdown of those calls.
Yeah, what's our response time, Chief? That'd be helpful.
Excuse me. Recent analysis done by our crime analysis department, on priority one calls, we are there in 50, 56% of the time in less than five minutes. On priority two calls, we're there 43% of the time in five minutes or less. And priority three calls, we're there 53% of the time in five minutes or less. In emergencies, which I call EIPs, I'm sure you've heard Rick talk about it up here, emergencies in progress, 73% of the time we're there in less than five minutes, if that helps, ma'am.
And then, do you know what our crime rate is right now, Chief? I always ask this question every year.
Yes, I have some numbers I can, I can't give you the specifics as far as UCR, but I can give you some general.
Why don't you get those to us?
Yes, sir.
And, and, I mean, that, to stay on this stuff, and let's get those information to us on Monday if we could.
Okay.
Yes, sir, whatever you want.
But if you'll get a copy of that, a copy of the survey to everybody and-
Absolutely.
So that we can, do y'all have? I'm just, only, some of these questions that we can ask and we can give them to you and you can get them back to us.
Absolutely, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
City Manager Knutson, on behalf of the Reno Fire Department, Michael Hernandez, Fire Chief. We've followed the same, the same format, if you will, that the, that the police chief did in outlining what we, what measures we took, what measures the department took this fiscal year and its impacts. The slide you see in front of you indicates a reduction in our FTEs, our line, line staff. We took a reduction of 33% most recently. We, we rifted 36 firefighters, which brought our, our line staff to 232 full-time equivalents, including safety officers, battalion chiefs, captains, operators, and firefighters. Regarding our support staff, that was a 41% reduction. Currently, we're at 25 FTEs, and that includes fleet maintenance personnel, administrative support personnel, and fire prevention personnel. What we've done, because of the reduction in our funding, we combined three fire prevention offices from three different locations into a central location here at City Hall, specifically the fire prevention office that was on Moana and the fire prevention office that was at the county building. And we consolidated that into one, one area. We've implemented, we've gone away from, or we've moved as best we can from field training to online training and more continuing education training in the stations utilizing online training capabilities, enabling our personnel to remain in the stations and to remain available to respond for service. We, of significance was our renegotiated contract with the fleet maintenance facility. We reduced the space that our maintenance facility, and we also renegotiated the cost for that, and that was relatively significant for our organization. And another, another cost-saving move that we took this year was we relocated from our Ryland property that we were leasing here to City Hall, and that continues, that is ongoing as we speak. The most significant impact that the organization has had to accommodate for, due to the reduction in our, in our budget, has been in our service delivery regarding our station locations and our number of engine companies and truck companies that are available. If you'll note that in fiscal year '08-'09, we had approximately 23 engines and trucks in service. That was the beginning of the brownout scenarios. In mid-December of '08, they browned out two truck companies. Fiscal year '09-'10, because of a reduction in force, they further reduced two more apparatus, and we went from 23 to 21. Fiscal year 10-11, due to a reduction in force, we added an additional three engines, three stations that we, that we browned out, bringing our, our engine company, truck company complement to 18, where it currently stands. As we, as we move forward in planning for our future budget and potential budget reductions, my only option currently is to look at browning out an additional station. To give you a summary of our, of our staffing levels, if you look at fiscal year '99-'00, this was prior to consolidation with the Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District, we had approximately 271 employees. Post-consolidation, this is after we, we merged with Truckee Meadows, we had approximately 340. In fiscal year '09-'10, we were at 386. Because of the recent reductions, we are currently, as a combined system, that's a combined Truckee Meadows Reno Fire Department system, we are currently at 257 full-time equivalents, which is actually below what we were prior to consolidation. Regarding the geography and the statistics for our organization, prior to consolidation, we were covering approximately 75 square miles, serving a population of about 166,000 people, and we were responding to just under 15,000 calls of service per year for, for a daily average of about 41 calls. During consolidation, we increased our, our response area to about 6,300 square miles. Our population went from 165 to 218,000. Our calls, calls for service increased to approximately about 36, or 35,000, which averages out to about 95 to 98 calls a, a day. Currently, in fiscal year 10-11, those numbers remain the same with the exception of our calls for service. They've increased by about 1,000. We're currently responding to just over 36,000 calls for service each year, about an average of 100 calls a day. And with that, I will take any questions.
Just for, for wrapping up this fiscal year, we're tracking the, the overtime numbers.
Yes, ma'am.
I know some of the, the comps, we don't know, but do we know what we're on track in average to finish for this fiscal year because we're going to have to-
Correct. We are, we're, we're tracking it on a, on a pay, by pay period. And the, the one unknown are the, the comp time payouts and the holiday, holiday payouts. Currently, we're projected to be somewhere between 225 to about $250,000 over budget in those two specific areas. I'm going to look back at my budget analyst, and she's giving me the thumbs up that we're, we're about in that neighborhood. And, and, and we do, we do monitor our overtime daily in terms of how many hours are we, are we using in terms of personnel coming back to fill in vacant spots. Again, my goal is to keep as many stations open as possible and, and keep our service delivery to the highest level possible that we can, with the understanding that because of the brownout scenarios, there are areas that, response areas that are larger. Our response times are impacted. And, and short, we have fewer people doing just as much work and, and responding to the same number of calls. We're, we're a leaner organization. We're working harder, and we're responding to a, a larger geographical area by district, if that, that makes sense.
And then gas prices. Have we accounted for the rise in gas prices? I did see in the last memo within the fire department's budget. Do we have a projection?
I can, I can get that for you. We, I know that when we initially projected it out, we projected high, but we didn't anticipate gas going through the ceiling as much as we did. So I, I think it's, that's a global impact to all departments, so.
So do we know, I mean, is that plugged into this budget? That's what I'd like to know because it certainly-
For the record, Michelle Hobbs, Senior Management Analyst, Reno Fire. You're absolutely correct. For this fiscal year, when we started making reductions, we started reducing fuel, beginning in December and then in March. And then we did start spiking up with our gas. What we're doing too, I had projected we may be about $20,000 short this fiscal year for fuel. We're reducing some of the other line items we, we left at the bare, bare minimum to cover that for this fiscal year. For next fiscal year, we budgeted at the higher for $4.25 rate to, and cover that rise in the fuel rates for next fiscal year. For so, for 10-11, it's included in there.
So based on that $4.25, I'm thinking maybe we should budget for $5, but I, I mean, that's just, I, I think we've got to put, I mean, we're at what, four now?
We're at four now. We can certainly go back and, and do an anal, analysis for, for $5.
Yeah, I think it's-
And see what that difference is.
I, I think it's projecting wrong.
$4.75 would be the minimum I'd use since I buy a lot of it.
So, and then I, just a comment, Mr. Mayor. I think we are making some progress on the contract negotiations. I'm hopeful that, that we're going to be able to, to reach some agreements on Monday. And I, I, I do think IFF is, although we can't talk about them publicly, I, I think we're getting close to reaching some agreements, which I think would be extremely positive for the department and the city, so.
And I'd like to echo the council members' comments that, from what I'm hearing from the organization and their leadership, there certainly is a, a good appetite to reach consensus and, and a fair and equitable contract, so.
Any other questions right now? If you have any questions other than the ones that I asked, please write them down and get them to the city manager. Public Works?
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. For the record, John Flansburgh, Director. In Public Works, I guess I'd like to start with a couple things, successes that we have had. With the Accelerated Neighborhood Street Program, I just want to affirm that has been a very good program for us. We will be able to do about 25% more work this next year, which is, we thought it was a three-year program. This would be the finishing, the third year, but we're going to have about 25% more work we're going to be able to accomplish to make it basically a four-year program. So I just want to thank the council again for their support in that. Also, our energy efficiency project that we have going on, that's going very well. We are, we are under budget. We are on time. In fact, we, we suspect that we may have some savings there, and we may be bringing back additional projects for your consideration within the funding that we have that will get us even additional energy savings, which those are ongoing savings that we have. So it's been a very successful program for us as well. Finally, I want to just discuss briefly Tom Wharf. We are partners with City of Sparks in the Tom Wharf operations through the third-party audit that was completed a little over a year ago. And implementing those suggestions, we have been able to save over a million dollars in just our portion of cost on an annual basis in Tom Wharf, and that's been a success for us as well. Again, we do have infrastructure challenges, and, and in this budget, we'll be talking a little bit more about that on the capital projects, but we are starting to address some of those with what we're bringing to you as, as some of the options. So look forward to that discussion as well. In our overall structuring of the department, we have combined three engineering managers into two. So we had an engineering manager in capital projects. We had one for environmental, and we had one that was overseeing the collection system maintenance of the, of the sewer program as well as our plant maintenance, treatment plant maintenance. We have split those duties in that our, the, our engineering manager over capital projects will also be seeing the collection system rehabilitation, and the engineering manager over environmental will also be overseeing the wastewater treatment, capital projects at the plants, as well as water quality issues. In maintenance and operations, we had five management positions over maintenance and operations. That is being reduced to three. These are the things that are in place as of now. Again, as we look at the next slide, it was from the adopted budget last year to currently what we have now, which is basically the amended budget. And finally, on this slide and, and changes in the restructuring, our parking meter maintenance is now under contract with Secure Storage Technologies. We expect that that will, that they'll finalize the parking meter kiosk program that'll be in place by the end of this year, and that those, that staff will transition, and that will be just under contract. We will not have staff performing that work specifically. will be just under contract, we will not have staff performing that work specifically. Within Public Works, on the next one, we just show the general slides of the reductions that we have, we have had. Again, we are, we are under four different funds, basically. We have a general funded portion of our operations, we have street fund, we have sewer fund, and we have the fleet services inter-fund. And so this slide just represents the reductions we've had there. Again, over 50% in many of the general fund areas, and in some areas, much less. Street maintenance and sewer storm maintenance funded under the street fund and sewer fund, respectively. On the maintenance aspect of that, we have had reductions, but not to the same degree. We have the same amount of infrastructure that we need to maintain. With that, be willing to answer any questions that you may have in regards to other, we covered a lot of these changes in our last presentation in what we implemented, so...
Okay, question to Ms. Zadra.
John, where is the FLED committee funding? Is that within your budget, or...
The flood plain, the flood plain management that we have within the city, function we work with community development on, that is funded through the sewer fund and through what would be here sanitary engineering. The actual flood management authority staff is funded through the 1/8 cent sales tax that goes for the flood project itself.
And just as a reminder, Mr. City Manager, the request that I had several meetings back for a full report, detailed report on their budgeting.
Yeah, that'll be coming.
Any other questions right now? Yes, Ms. Fred.
John, what's the street sweeping schedule for downtown? I ask this every budget year.
You do. It was seven days a week in previous years, it is at six days a week currently, and that has been the schedule that we had maintained. Again, those, the funding for street sweeping is out of the street fund, and we are also implementing from April through October, the sweeping in neighborhoods, so that people can go on the website and determine what day their area is gonna be swept, so they can move cars and plan for that sweeping.
That's great. And what's the health department mandate? Is it, we're on a, are we on a four or six-week schedule?
The health department mandate is once per month.
Okay, once per month. So if we went down in the downtown maintenance to once per month, just like we do with everyone else in the city, I'd like to know the dollar amount associated with the savings there, I ask that. And then, that'd be my first question, and then the second question, on the sewer fund, do we still have a backup policy for when the, there's a sewer backup that's caused by the city sewer lines? Do we still have that?
We have, we do have a backup policy. We changed that policy when we brought that to council in this previous year or 18 months, from what it was. So that policy has changed, and if it's determined, if it's at no fault of the city, the city does not participate to, to the level that we have in the past.
So what's our policy with that now, John?
I will bring that back to you.
Okay, thank you.
The street in the downtown area, or the redevelopment district, painting curbs and sidewalks and striping the streets and stuff, what is the status of that?
We are still on a once per year, or I should say, we are twice per year on painting red curbs in the downtown. We are on once every other year for painting red curbs outside of the district, per council direction.
Okay, so...
You know, in this budget, there, we will have some reductions here and there. It might extend that time to some degree, but we are still, that is our plan, is still to hit those at that level.
Once a year in the downtown area?
Twice per year downtown, once every other year.
So we'll get ready for our guests when they come, so we look real pretty. Okay. Anything else? Any other question? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Community Communications Technology.
Good morning, Rick Vandemar, Communication and Technology Director. I'm gonna be short and sweet. I represent both an internal division in my IT division, and I also support the services that we provide through our 911 dispatching. I think one of the things you need to look at, for the most part, in our budget, what we've been, what we've had to do is freeze positions. Currently, right now, if you look at our 911 dispatch operations, I have 56 full-time positions available, down from the 69 that was allocated just a couple years ago. We are currently below 1996 levels that were available for dispatchers. On my technology department, I'm down 11 positions out there. Overall, in the department, we're down 35%. Next slide. One of the things that you'll keep in mind is what we, what we're moving to, if you, if you look at this, is we're gonna be moving from one director and four managers to basically moving into next fiscal year, one IT manager that's gonna be responsible for the IT environment and dispatch as we move forward. Some of the adjustments that we've made to address these levels out there is typically we're, it's not an impact on the citizens, per se, but it is an impact on the dispatch side for some of the agencies that we serve. An example of that is we focus on emergency communications, not the secondary communications, which could be non-life-threatening call-ins to dispatch for information, as an example. Our FTE ratio to units in the field has gone up substantially, which means that our dispatchers are now responsible for more units in the field than they have in previous years. And we limit use of the secondary and the second primary radio frequencies. These are sometimes used by some of the public safety agencies for additional communications outside of a primary channel. On our IT side, we are typically focused on maintenance, as opposed to, I hate to say innovation, but we're focused on really maintaining the infrastructure and keeping that going. We've got a fairly substantial program where we're repurposing a lot of the computers and computer equipment coming back out. Instead of replacing or salvaging them, we're disassembling them and moving them forward. I think another transition that you need to keep in mind is the aspect that all of my IT techs now, or all of my IT personnel are working on both hardware and software. So we've tried to retrain them to basically say, do whatever we can to keep the systems running. And that's short and sweet. If there's any questions...
Any questions right now, anybody? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
John Hester, Assistant City Manager, I'll be even shorter and sweeter, I have one slide. And since everybody's told you about staff changes, just to let you know, over the last four years, from '07-'08 to '11-'12, the staff in community development's gone down over 62% when you adjust for the changes and what's been added and taken away from the department. Some of the things we've done over the last year, two years, is combined four positions into one. The top one is my position. We've combined the administration function from the former community development, redevelopment, and business license divisions, to, all of that is being handled now by the community development administrative staff. We've combined the planning and engineering divisions under one manager, that's Claudia Hansen, who's planning and engineering manager. You can see there are some of the cross-training that's happened in the last year. We've had the building permit and business license staff work in each other's counters in anticipation of putting them together. Code enforcement and business license revenue officers have both cross-trained with each other, so they're out in the field. There are a couple other innovations that the city manager wanted to make sure I told you about. One is in the Economic Development Action Plan that you approved last week, we're creating two AMZ Bud Person positions, and they are designed specifically to work with customers who have issues in any one of these areas, from planning to engineering to building to business license. At the same time that they're doing that, they have the authority to look at the processes and change those. Some examples of the folks we've been working with are, we've been working with Day Cole, Bernie Carter, and TJ Day on their project on Virginia, some of you have heard about that. We've had coordination between business license and planning, where somebody got held up on a business license penalty because they were not able to get the planning permits, we were able to fix that. You heard Tim Ruffin come talk about the HP Crosswalk, those kind of things. We're working, we're formalizing that program. We think it will have great benefit to our customers. Also, through our shared services committee, which Councilwoman Zadra sits on, we have approved building permit recommendations that have gone through that subcommittee and to the shared services committee, and will now be coming to you, that will essentially make it possible for anyone to get a business license, apply for a business license at Reno Sparks, I'm sorry, Reno or Washoe County, and same thing with business licenses, you'll be able to apply for and get one at either of those counters. So we're getting those two functions coordinated, and customer service increased significantly in those two areas. I'd be happy to answer any questions, or...
Any questions this time? Okay, thank you very much. Finance Department.
For the record, Jill Olson, Finance. In the Finance Department, we have gone through a lot of restructuring and reorganization as far as the creation of Office of Management and Budget, moving budget out, and as well as moving a portion of the Revenue Division as far, for business license over to Community Development. This has resulted in some restructuring within the remainder of Finance. The duties of the, of five management positions have been combined into three, the remaining three management positions, one of which, the director position, has been primarily vacant for the last two and a half years. Accounting, accounts receivable, and sewer billing functions are now under one division manager position. The remaining one senior management analyst now covers all four of the remaining divisions. Even with the reduced, the reduced FTEs within Finance, we are trying to enhance the revenue collection within Finance, in the areas of accounts receivable and sewer billing, by working with the collection agency, enhancing our follow-ups in bankruptcies on the sewer side, bankruptcies, lien processes, lien releases, or lien filings, and following up with, and connecting with the title companies in property transfers, and following the, the bank and the foreclosure processes, and trying to capture those sooner rather than later. And that senior management analyst is also assisting with purchasing duties as well. In addition, the duties of the vacant accountant position have also been combined with the remaining accountant, the accounting manager, and the senior management analyst duties. We no longer have the administrative secretary position filled, so the remaining administrative staff, the accounting manager, and the assistant director position have picked up a lot of the duties that were primarily responsible within that admin secretary position. Cross-training is occurring amongst all of the staff in every division in order to cover all of the critical duties that have to be performed, and a note is made at the bottom of this slide, even though the cross-training is occurring, we're very careful to make sure that we're maintaining the appropriate segregation of duties that is required in order to meet the internal controls that are needed, so that we don't have any conflicts related to the processes that, that are important to, to make, so that we don't have any issues that might arise as far as staff being able to perform duties, that would be inappropriate, that may result in them being able to do things that they should not be able to do, such as cut a check from the beginning to the end of the process. And just as a summary, in the management, mid-management, and professional area, there has been a 50% reduction in personnel. We've gone from eight, we have eight eligible positions, four of those positions are filled. And at the administrative and support level, we have 12 eligible positions, and eight of those positions are filled, so there's been a 33% reduction in that, in that staffing level. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, Jill, do we have, or Kevin, I don't know if this question for you, do we have, in this particular budget, I think we're too lean in our Finance Department, do we have set aside for next year's budget, the costs of a director in there, and some of the other administrative support, Kevin, that's being proposed?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we do have a director position in the budget, and it's fully funded. There are not additional positions funded within Finance at this time. We're actually gonna post that position within the next week and have resumes available for when the new city manager starts, so that we can start to make that transition as quickly as possible.
And have you had time to review that department, Kevin? Because I do think the internal controls are absolutely critical, so I think, other than a finance director, I'd like to hear from staff on Monday to make sure that that department is, is fully staffed. I mean, it, there's only so much you can cut, and that's a priority for the council. And then my second question, I ask this every year too, is on the sewer. Seems to me you can pay absolutely every bill online now, and I know you can pay your sewer bill online as well, but how can we get away from sending the bills, Jill? If someone opts to get a notice electronically, it's, would seem to me we would save a lot of money with postage, with sending the bill. Tom Wharf, the same thing. You get your bill in the mail at Tom Wharf as well. Can we get a system that would allow you to do that?
We can get a system. In fact, we looked at that a couple of years ago with the IT department. There is quite a cost involved. It is not completely offset with the savings. We can look at that again and see what the net would be. There is a company, in fact, the company who does our billing, who sends out our bills for us, does provide that service, that is one company that does that. It is, there is a significant cost involved, but we can look at that again and take a look at the net.
I mean, even if it was done through email notification?
Correct, and we would need to go through a process to, just to gather all of the emails, just go through a process where people could start submitting their emails, so that we could gather that information. It can certainly be done, it's just a costly system.
Let's don't forget us, I almost said old folks, let's don't forget us mature folks now. Some of us don't do those scientific things that y'all talk about.
And then Jill, do we know the percentage of those who pay their bill online in sewer?
We can get that.
Okay.
For Monday, thank you.
All right, any other questions or anything? Mr. City Manager, you had a suggestion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand that we're taking a little bit longer than we had suggested, so if you would like, there's several internal service departments that are left, we can take questions on those through writing and move forward to start discussing the city council non-city programs and some of the other funds, or we can briefly go through them, or we can have you just ask questions, whatever would be your pleasure.
Anybody got any suggestions or anything? Mr. Isaac?
Mr. Mayor, I just got the budget book, and I haven't been able to look through it very much, and basically, they're just reading what we have here, so I don't mind reading it myself and coming back and either going through you and asking questions that I have and see what happens on Monday. But I do agree with two council people that we're looking at this like everything's gonna be hunky-dory, and we haven't seen, because it's hard for me to make a decision, it's to, nobody's told me what they're gonna cut if we don't get the concessions. And that's where the crux of our operation's gonna be, otherwise, you know, we're just looking at the same few items that we usually look at every year.
Mr. Guston or Mr. Dorch, y'all have anything?
You know, one of the questions I had, and we can do it Monday, I guess, Muni Court, we've talked about for the last couple of years about collection on, on parking fines, et cetera, and I saw the bulleted item in the handout that you're focusing on collections, have those improved greatly, or you can tell us on Monday, or what? I don't need to know it now, but is that something?
I do have specific, specific information for you, that I plan to bring forward on Monday.
Okay, on Monday's fine. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, for the court, the municipal court, we did ask, and I don't know whether you're gonna present this, but I know we asked before about the justification for the costs, a more detailed document from the court this year about why the cost is what it is, judging from what other people have said the district court is, and we had discussed that earlier, so, Justice Court.
And perhaps, Mr. Iyaz, if you have more specific questions, at a couple of previous city council meetings, we addressed some of those, but I'm not sure what else you're looking for. looking for.
Ken Howard, on behalf of Reno Municipal Court, that specific question I thought was addressed at the last session. Specifically, I referenced the municipal court budget vis-à-vis the Reno Justice Court budget. And as you may recall, I discussed the Department of Alternative Sentencing. I discussed the difference between jurisdictional level, civil versus criminal. So there were a number of things that went into making the differentiation between the amounts of those respective budgets. I'm not a scholar in regard to the budget of the Reno Justice Court. If you have some specific questions, perhaps we could address it on that basis.
Well, I know some other things that came forward, and I don't know whether it's the same questions or other questions, was the number of cases that Municipal Court has here compared to the number each judge has, and the number of pro temp judges, how often they're used?
Two things on that issue. As I indicated previously, we don't have any control over the number of cases that are filed. That's strictly a function of the police department.
I absolutely agree, but we have the control over how many judges are there. So whether there's four judges or three judges, if the caseload doesn't justify four judges, that's the thing we, I think I need to see.
And that's a function that you, as a council and body, have to make. I understand that. The only thing that I would tell you in that regard is that I would hope that you would not take a snapshot in time. Yes, the caseload work production is down now as a result of some factors beyond our means. Is it going to remain like that? Will it remain static? Or do we expect that it's going to turn around and increase to the levels that it was previously? I understand the numbers that you're talking about.
Well, that's why I'm asking you guys to provide the report. It doesn't have to be a snapshot. You tell me what, over the last 10 years, the trending lines and how it compares to, I don't know if Las Vegas is appropriate in their municipal court, you know, so I don't even know which court to compare it to. Do the police have the same jurisdiction there that they do here? So that's the kind of analysis I'd like to see. And then it seems like we have an inordinate amount, and only because hell we know ours, of pro temp judges and how many days that they're on. It seems that we have, we approved a list of 40 pro temp judges. I mean, I'm just...
Are you talking about the number on the list itself?
Correct.
The reason for the number on the list, I can address very easily, and I wish it were more, were limited to judges that reside in the city of Reno. I'd like to see it expanded, the statute expanded, to judges who reside in Washoe County. And the reason for that is, it's very difficult to obtain a pro temp judge. So when I have my administrative secretary begin the calls, she may call 15 potential pro temp judges before she receives one. We're not paying a large dollar amount for the pro temps. I think it's $150 per session.
Your Honor, here's one of my issues with that. I'd like to know how many days, because the public elects judges to be judges, and if we have people who are just pro temp, if I'm going in front of a judge who's not elected and they're making the same case as you, why don't I just do all pro temp judges? I'll go down to one municipal court judge and if you say they're cheaper, I'll have all pro temp judges?
If we're on vacation, Judge Aziz, or we're at the Judicial College to obtain CLE, if I'm gone for the entire week, there's no way typically that one of the other judges can handle all of my docket. It's practically impossible because of the number of dockets that we have.
You just told me they were down this year. I mean, we don't need to get into this now.
The number of cases is down, but irrespective of the number of cases, we still have dockets. Yes, we can transfer those around. And I will tell you that in our plan for the coming year, one of the items that we're really focused on is this pro temp expense. I think that you're going to see that as compared to past years, it's going to be a nominal expenditure, because we are focused on attempting, when possible, to pick up the dockets from the other judges with sufficient notice. Judge Gardner, for example, will call me and tell me I'm going to be on vacation. Or the alternative, unfortunately, I'm not sure that this is something that I prefer, is to go dark, so we don't have to expend that expenditure.
Well, why don't we have?
And I'm just going to say, part of that is, for me, is, I mean, we don't allow people to be pro temp council people. We're elected to do our job, and I'm wondering why, you know, if I was in front of someone who wasn't elected and say, well, wait a minute, how fair is this?
I don't think you're going to find a court in this state that doesn't employ or utilize a pro temp judge.
That doesn't mean I like it.
We'll have this discussion later.
If you would, any questions that you have that you'd like me to address on Monday, if you could put them in writing, email me, we'll go ahead and we'll address those.
We'll get the questions over and Matt, we'll get the questions to you, and if you get them back to the council and stuff, we'll all sit down and work them together.
All right.
Okay. Thank you, Your Honor. Thanks, Matt. Okay. Okay, why don't you go into the RDA discussion?
Could you please move to Slide 41, please? Several of you may be aware that we had, in the past couple of weeks, told you that the amount of the tax increment was going to go down significantly within the RDA. We had originally thought it was going to be about $790,000, but we received some good news, as it were, that it's actually going to be $990,000, because the state document failed to include some of the other taxes that will be included in that number for the year-end. But as you can see from this chart, that Area Number One will have all of the $990,000, and Area Number Two is projected to have no increment revenue, because the value has fallen below the base amount for RDA Number Two. In next year's budget, we have the Parking Gallery and the West Street Market are the only two programs that are left, and we've structured them so that they're self-sustaining. In other words, there's revenues offsetting the expenditures for both projects. With Parking Gallery, it's parking fees and leases at the facility, and for the West Street Market, it's leases and programming costs from the city for parks programming. Next slide, please. We've eliminated all expenditures for staffing, for indirect costs. The RDA is basically a holding company for the debt that it still has. The economic development function that it used to provide has been moved to Community Development, and they will continue to manage all of the programs within the RDA so that we continue to have oversight, but it will not be within the RDA. And lastly, the Baseball District did not produce any tax increment growth under the ARPA, therefore, under the existing terms that we have with Nevada Land, there is no payment due, and we'll roll that amount forward into future years. Next slide, please. Currently, there's two different types of debt within RDA One and Two. One is bonded debt payments on an annual basis through the end of the, both RDA One, through the end of RDA One, and which is not the same as RDA Two, that actually lasts a little longer. It averages about 2.9 million a year, and next year it's 2.909. And then there's two privately-held debt payments, one for Cabela's improvements that we made to the roadways around Cabela's. That's about $80,000 a year, and the remainder of that amount is the estimated amount for the fire station relocation loan that we made in anticipation of building the baseball stadium. We currently have $2.9 million in reserves in next year's budget for debt, but the complication there is, is that as we move through the year and expend funds to pay the debt service, we will no longer have the required debt reserves. I've asked our acting Finance Director to meet with our bond counsel and bond consultants to come back within the next 60 days with a complete set of different scenarios that we could pursue to pay this debt, or to refinance it, or in some way restructure it so that we can live within the amount of revenues coming into RDA. And we will come forward with a number of different plans for you to consider prior to the fiscal year starting. At some point during the year, though, we're going to have to make some changes and amend the budget so that we're able to implement that final plan. You can go ahead and skip the next slide and go straight to rebuilding reserves. In the budget that we've provided for you, the general fund, unreserved fund balance will be sufficient to meet the 4.3 percent required by state law at about $6.3 million. We also have $3 million in stabilization budgeted for next year. The contingency amount for council contingency is $100,000, and the capital project reserve is $500,000. Both the Street Fund and Sewer Fund are projected to have sufficient funds for their reserves at 2.6 and 7.2 million respectively. The 4.3 percent represents about two weeks' working capital for the city of Reno. We're allowed, under state law, before we can claim that we have the ability to pay on any of our contracts, to have up to 8.3 percent, which represents 30 days' working capital, or about 12 million, or 12.8 million dollars. Between the reserve amount we're going to have and the stabilization, we'll have just over $9 million, so we're working back towards that goal of having 30 days' working capital. I believe that within the next three years, we can achieve that goal and start to have much more stability and the ability to react to further economic impacts. Next slide, please. There are four things that we're going to start doing this year to help prepare us for the future. The first one is, we started in January with the Process Improvement Program. Business Licenses was the first group to go through that. They changed the way they did business, they reduced the cycle time, sometimes from 30 to 60 days for people to get their licenses to just a couple of days. They reduced the amount of handoffs between departments, they brought all the departments, including the Health Department, in and worked with them to improve those processes. And then the result was that we're going to save about $90,000 a year on that. We want to do that in all of our processes. We want to look at the way we're doing everything and increase efficiency and effectiveness across the entire city. We're also going to have a much more robust managed competition program. We're going to look at larger programs. We're going to test what it costs for us to deliver services against what we could do with the private sector. We're going to have a much more robust long-range financial planning program with five-year forecasting, different types of modeling, so that we can see what would happen if we tried different strategies. And we'll also look at a financial trend monitoring system that will alert us if things are moving against us in the economy, so that we have more time to react in the future. And lastly, our budgeting system is going to become much more outcome-focused. We're going to change our performance measurements, so that we're measuring things that actually give us a chance to manage the processes and get the outcomes that you've asked us to achieve through the strategic plan and the priorities that you've set for us. If you have any other questions, that's the end of our presentation for today. I would appreciate any questions that you have, even after this meeting, if you'd get them to me, and we will do our best to have those answers to you for Monday or soon thereafter. Thank you.
There's only one question I have, and I would like an explanation on the City Council's budget going up as much as it has. Was it showing about a 14 percent increase? And I'd like to know what those are and where they are and what's happened. Mr. Brazile?
Yeah, a couple things, Kevin. On the City Council budget, and, Mr. Mayor, there's a lot that goes into our budget that really isn't the City Council. I would say that we've cut our budget substantially, so, but the EDON, for example, I see that staff and I had asked about this, there's 71,000 that's budgeted to go to them this year. I would just have a question on why, since they're merging and consolidating. In fact, the Chamber moved out of this building, which I think is a revenue loss to us. So that consolidation, and then we don't have any funding in for the small business development. Is that correct with UNR? Have they requested funds? Do they know that?
Right.
That they didn't need them?
Let's do this, let's get these questions all in writing and get them to City Manager, so we can get these answers by Monday.
Okay, well, that's my question, Mr. Mayor, on the EDON, because, I mean, and they're the governor's proposal, too, it's going to be consolidated, so I don't know why we wouldn't keep those funds in-house. It's a huge expense.
Any other things? Any other questions, any other discussion? Okay. All right, so if you've got questions, get them written, turned in, and then the media or anybody can get a copy of them when you send them in, and then they get the answers when we get the answers. Okay? Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn. Oh, Monday's, Monday's scheduled meeting, instead of starting at 10, if it's okay with everybody, let's start at 10:30.
I mean, it's just problematic doing this at the last minute all the time. I'd like to start at 10 if we could.
Huh?
I'd like to start at 10 if we could. I think we've already posted the agenda as well.
We have posted the agenda. Okay, we'll go ahead and start at 10, there's no problem. Okay? All right, thank you.